If we could call our meeting to order, please. If we could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence and then afterwards we'll ask Ms. Tackett to lead us in the pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the roll?
Mr. Bradley, Mrs. Butcher-Comway.
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Eardley.
Here.
Mr. Lesby.
Here.
Mr. Showalter.
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames.
Here.
Mrs. Tackett.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you. We also have a great big audience tonight and some real special things on the agenda. But we'll move through the preliminary parts of the agenda and then get into the stuff that most people are here for. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting if you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made in seconds that the minutes be approved as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Each of you should have received a copy of the latest check register. And if anybody could indicate if you've received that or not. And as we introduce public comments, we'd just like to make sure council notices that our City Hall flag is at half mask for Senator McCann. And I'm very proud to have done so. The first person signed up for public comment is Mr. Frank Mason. Frank, we had, as you approached the podium, at your last visit, we had asked Eddie Hightower to look at a couple of things and report back to the council tonight, including just characteristics of the site, specifically the possibility of raising the curbs and some things of that nature. Eddie was in preparation for that. They had a family tragedy last night and Eddie, I sent him home this morning, so he is not here tonight to give us that report. We'll be glad to hear anything you have to say, Frank, but we don't have Eddie present to give us the information we had asked for.
I just wanted to give you off the air.
Sure. Be glad to.
I've got written comments and I'll hand those out to you, I'll give those to you too as I finish up. Week and a half ago after the last meeting, there was a moderate rainstorm and I, with my camera, walked the streets to see if I could tell what was happening to the water. Water from Main Street was coming down Mulberry and then it was coming on to Constitution. Some of it continued on down Mulberry, but a lot of it turned on to Constitution. Some of it turned on to Constitution immediately and then some of it crossed Constitution and then turned on to Constitution, going through the Napa parking lot and then into the Keystone entryway. And the water on the east side of Mulberry just continued on down, I guess down to College Street. The water that got on to Constitution did three things. Some of it crossed in front of Napa and some of that shows, I think, a little bit in the one of the pictures here. Some of it crossed in front of Napa and most of that followed the Keystone entrance down into the Keystone parking lot. Some started on the north side of Constitution but crossed the street, joining the water traveling down into the Keystone parking lot. The rest of the water remained on the north side of Constitution but then crossed the street, crossed Constitution, coming towards Keystone, clinging to the street edge and some disappearing underground and some continuing on to Hamilton. I was pleased determined that very little of the water coming off the parking lots was going down into the Keystone entryway. However, much of it did cross the street to the south side of Constitution. And it was my conclusion then that had the water, had the rain been any harder, the water that was now in Constitution would have entered the Keystone playground. There's no storm basin and no, or scant curb to direct the water away from the property. And then, as you said, Mayor, at the last meeting, you requested that the engineer start looking into that. It's been two weeks, I have not heard from the engineer and I did make two calls to the engineer's office two weeks ago and then last week and left voicemails and have not had any call back. At that meeting, I also requested the city to consider building a bump of some kind to stop the water. The mayor said that they could not do anything because you couldn't do anything that would force water onto other people's property. I've contracted to have a bump constructed on that entryway so that the street water can be kept on the street and it won't go on anybody's property. It will go on the street and then down to Hamilton and hopefully into a storm drain. At that meeting, you also, Mr. Mayor, you also requested that the engineer looked to see whether there was any problem with increased flooding on Keystone because of the destruction of the two buildings, the two houses that were there on Hamilton. And after looking at it, and I concluded that you were right, that the flooding on Hamilton, on the Keystone has increased since those buildings came down. But the reason for that is that all the water that came down from the parking lots and off the street went into the basements of those two houses and caused the rot, and those are good two pictures of the destruction, internal collapse of the internal building. When the property was occupied, they had sump pumps. And I talked to Steve Glass and he says he can remember seeing water being pumped out. So they had sump pumps, but when the electric went off, many, many years before I bought the property, sump pumps stopped working, water went in there and they started rotting. So during heavy rains, that water now washes on to the playground. Now, the last picture there is just another reminder of the water, the damage that was being caused by water coming down East College. So just to sum up, I'm gonna build the bump to stop the water. Hopefully, we'll have some curbs. And then I'm gonna go talk to the owners of the property that have those parking lots and ask them what they want to do about their water runoff, which is damaging my property.
Frank, I hope you understand that while I appreciate your engineering analysis of the water runoff, I'm probably gonna listen to my engineer.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. I'm probably gonna do that. And Frank, your continued references to how many times people haven't returned your calls, they'll all try and do better. That seems to be a common refrain every time you're at that podium. Okay? Thank you. But we'll get the engineer and we'll get some answers here. Do you have anything else tonight? Next on public comments, Todd Stone, Georgetown College.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here about a couple of things, actually. One is on September 29th, Georgetown College cross-country team for the homecoming of Georgetown College will be hosting a 5K. It'll run from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. The route, you should have a copy of that, send that to Tracy. And we will have approximately 15 volunteers from the cross-country team.
I was out of the office when you sent that, so they do not have a copy and the route has been tweaked a little bit.
And it's, that's the route that they submitted because it runs the most through college campus and that's what they were wanting to do. If we can, they can, if we can't, that's fine, so.
Yeah, we've, and it'll be up to the council, Todd. We're happy to have the event because, you know, we know college homecoming's a big deal and 5K is, for those that are fit enough to do it, we'll have a good time doing that. I may observe it rather than run in it.
We will, I will be busy with 40 other things that morning, so yeah, I'm not gonna get.
We set up three regular 5K routes.
And I did send that to them and that's the one that they sent, so, you know.
And we'll use the big 5K route this weekend for the Finley 5K.
Right.
Given your numbers, we would typically use the medium route or the small route, frankly.
Right, right.
But I think it's unfair to ask you to go to the county park for a Georgetown College 5K. So I think it's up to the, we have the existing middle length route, right? And you all have asked for something slightly different.
If I remember correctly, it was the old 5K route, started on college, went to Hamilton, up Jackson, Military, Old Limits Mill, circle around, and Georgetown Middle and come back in reverse. So that's the old 5K route, so.
And the requirements for our middle sized route is just $100 contribution toward the officers and enough volunteers to supplement the officers.
Okay.
And it's up to the council and I think the police committee, we had a tight chance to talk about this prior to the meeting, if we wanted to do the route deviation or hold to the standard route. I'm receptive to either one. I know the committee talked to the chief about it before the meeting.
I have no issue with it at all. I mean, they got volunteers that are gonna be working and you have your police out there. I think it should be fine. I'll make the motion appropriate.
What was the recommendation of the police committee? Were they fine with it, deviating from the route?
Mark? Mark and I talked about it a little bit and, you know, we said that three policemen, you know, and an extra one, but it's kind of a tough situation a little bit.
It's actually four officers.
Four officers. Four of ours are.
Four of ours and then they would contribute to us, the college five volunteers.
Oh, okay. Did we say something about three of our officers and one of the college?
Yeah, that's, we provide three of the four officers and then the person, the people having the event pay for that fourth officer with the $100 contribution.
Okay, okay.
So that creates the fourth officer.
The fourth, okay.
So.
I'll make the second on Marvin's motion.
Yeah, I mean, college, you know, it's our college. Let them have their 5K.
Let me read you on that, so.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, sir.
You can have your 5K. What else you got?
One other thing, on September 5th, which is next Wednesday, the Student Government Association is having a street fair on Memorial Drive. They're wanting to close it just for that. It'd be from 5:00 to 9:00. They're trying to get more students out of, especially the freshmen, out of their dorms and get them involved in college activities. So that was the other thing. I did not get a chance to do the paperwork yet.
Well, you own the Memorial Drive.
So, okay. In that case, I just wanted to give y'all the.
It is, it is a public thoroughfare, so I think it's appropriate for the council to take that vote for closing it for the hours, even though it is your street. And if you get those college freshmen all the way up on Memorial Drive, maybe they can walk down Main Street to downtown.
We're pushing that. Matter of fact, the emails will start going out very soon about the Festival of the Horse, trying to get them downtown for that as well, so.
Mayor, should we have the appropriate paperwork anyway, since it's a public thoroughfare, just for documentation?
Yeah, if you would go ahead and submit that too, Tracy. I think we can go ahead and prove it.
I'll make a motion for that. I'll second.
Can I second? If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Thank you all.
There you go.
That's all I've got and I will get that to you tomorrow.
Thanks.
All right.
Next on the public sign-in sheet is Mr. Stephen Price.
Thank you, Mayor Price. I intend to comment on the proposed South Sewer Line extension. And I had a, I got some paperwork from, got some figures from the Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service. Unfortunately, I didn't bring the paper that the figure, that the figures are on, but I asked them how much the town spends on the average month for electricity to run 54 pump stations that the town operates to pump septic waste uphill to the sewage treatment plant. 54 pump stations all over Georgetown, some of which include more than one pump, I was told. I don't have the figure with me, but I think it's in the neighborhood of $15,000. I'm sorry. Yeah, $15,000 a month. I asked them, what is the charge? How much does the town pay per month, on the average month, for deposit of sewage sludge in the landfill? And again, I don't have the figures with me. I think it was close to $20,000 a month. I know that sounds impossible, so let me, let me just warn you that I'm not sure on that. But I did conclude from the figures that the town is spending hundreds, in excess of $100,000 a year for electricity to pump septic waste or sewage and is spending $100,000, in excess of $100,000 a year to deposit sewage sludge in the landfill. These figures, I'm sorry, I don't have the paper here and if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, but I'm speaking in, as best I can recall. We're talking about tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to push sewage sludge through uphill just for treatment and then to deposit it in the landfill. I don't personally want to be a part of that and I think everybody in Georgetown should reconsider the part that they play in that scenario. And Mayor Price, you quoted in the Georgetown News Graphic as saying that the environmental problem will be solved if the sewer line is extended to the trailer park on Lyle Road. But the sewage sludge remains. And in fact, if that sewer line is extended, it's gonna add to the sewage sludge that the treatment plant generates and then has to be discarded somewhere.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it does. And we've anticipated that.
But, so, I think that, and other research I've done indicates sewage treatment plants on the eastern United States have been a bunch of news items about the effluent, treated effluent, supposedly treated pure water, effluent from the sewage plants on the east coast, Pennsylvania, I've got it here somewhere, but you can research it yourself. The effluent supposedly clean includes hormones, apparently, that alter genetic structures of fish, that fish are being, they're being, their sex is becoming mixed. Male baths in the Potomac River are been, they've been carrying eggs, making eggs.
Steve, I can assure you that the effluent from our wastewater treatment plants is clean and legal and we are proceeding with this South Sewer Line project.
Well, let me, if I'm, Mayor President, let me quote you.
Steve, you don't need to quote, you don't need to read us letters or quote to us. The council has indicated we're not gonna promote public policy of burying solid waste in our backyards. We're going to continue to use sanitary sewer lines in Georgetown and we're gonna continue to try and solve this problem on Lyle Road with a sanitary sewer line extension. That's what we're going to do. We are not going to bury solid waste in our backyard, Steve.
I'm not asking, Mayor, you're using the plural, first-person plural, Mayor Price. Like, we, if you don't want to do it, that's fine, but if you could, if you would allow the people at the trailer park to do it, they could lead Georgetown toward an agrarian commerce and home life.
I understand, thank you.
Home setting based on horticulture because you would be encouraging them to keep the fertilizer at home instead of shipping it to this treatment plant.
I understand.
And in comparison to the.
See, we've got a big crowd, we've been over this every meeting for six months. Let's stop tonight.
Okay, well, I'll just refer you to KRS 22443-010, Public Policy of the Kentucky's Reduced Landfill Shipments.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That concludes everyone who had signed up for public comment. Now we get to Mayor's comments and the most important thing under Mayor's comments tonight is Chief Ward, I believe, has some rather significant promotions to announce.
Mayor, Council, it's an honor to bring before you tonight. Due to some recent retirements, it's opened up some officer positions within the fire department. We've recently promoted Jamie Gifford here to battalion chief. He's a 14-year veteran of the fire department and we promoted Cam Johnson, six-year veteran, to the captain position. Both these individuals are very deserving of these promotions. They've worked hard. They've contributed a lot to this department and it's very well deserved, so just bring them before you tonight and let their family pin them, but Cam, if you want to come first? Your family come up pin you?
She can go with you. It's okay.
I'd be glad to. I mean, you're all saying, I'll do whatever you want.
He won't bite me one time. Get a free pin, poke right now.
Come here, I'm here. Shh. I really don't want you to.
You can take the lead, get in the picture. You're proud of getting, good to see you.
It happens that every time we swear here in a new police officer, half the department shows up to welcome the new officer.
That's right.
Look at these promotions tonight, how many fellow firefighters came to be a part of this, what they're planning on, it's really special. Says something about.
And for the new guys over here, Mayor, for the new gentlemen over here, in several years, a few years down the road, there'll be people watching you guys get promoted, I promise you.
Good for you. Thank you.
We just thank you all as well for giving us the opportunity to do this, to recognize these individuals, because, like I said, they have did a lot of hard work, they've put in a lot of, you know, dedication to this department, to the city and well deserved, well deserved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do a very good job.
We don't want to leave, but thank you all.
We're gonna leave you some space with air.
Okay. Go back into the rest of the Mayor's comments.
Hey, don't. Don't.
The rug got in the way.
It's probably fine, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, Haley's standing right there. Haley, will you go turn the fan on?
Chief coming in.
Thank you. Chief.
That one? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley.
Just a couple of comments. I don't have a long list, but I've got a couple of important things that I'd like to at least plant a seed with the council. We don't have to resolve the issue completely tonight, but just to talk about, the real simple thing is, of course, we've got the Festival of the Horse coming up. It's right away. And we made a note today when we were talking about the Festival of the Horse to make sure that we have our wagon again if we want to. Last year when we had the wagon for the council, I think we made arrangements with the gentleman again for this year, so you all keep that in mind. It will start off with the Chili Cook-Off and then all the other Festival of the Horse I wanted to at least start a conversation with the council about some of the many news articles that we're now beginning to see about how difficult international, global recycling markets are right now and how they have literally collapsed, particularly since January. The issue of contamination within recycled goods has become a very big issue in global recycling markets. And then China's decision in January, in part response to the escalating trade conflict. trade conflicts, are no longer taking our recyclables. The articles that I've read is that cities all across America today are finding themselves with stacks of recyclable, recycled materials that they can't find anything to do with. The Bluegrass Air Development District sends out articles on a variety of subjects. And the one that came out this morning was the unintended consequence of the trade war. Just a couple of quotes out of here, that cities across the country are reconsidering their recycling programs, thanks to Chinese regulations enacted as a response in part to the tariffs enacted by President Donald Trump. Talking about China's actions, this has left cities across the U.S. with piles of essentially unusable materials. Where companies were once selling recyclable material, they are now being forced to pay to dispose it, of it. In some communities, special adjustments to regulations are being made to allow for recycled material not to be recycled. Recycling companies across the company are considering having to raise their monthly collection prices, while others are warning residents that they may need to suspend or stop their programs altogether. I'm simply saying this to make the council aware that there is a lot of literature out there right now about the current global recycling markets. And the recycling market has completely collapsed.
It was on its, I've been reading articles for the last two years, and it was on its way of doing that. And so now I'm glad to see that others are starting to acknowledge that. And the prices, when we talked about recycling, the prices was going to cost us far more to get rid of it, recycling it, than it was to take it to the landfill. And but what was happening is the Americans were dumping it on somebody else, on another company, taking it to China and other countries. So it's, recycling right now is not the best thing for the environment, for our country or anybody else's at the moment, if we've got a landfill to put it in. But hopefully that will change, and we can go come up with new ideas, new things to do with our recycled products.
I think they're going to have to, because in growing communities, and with our landfill, what are we going to do? Just keep it going?
I mean, you already see people talking about not using as much plastic anymore, the plastics draw debate, things like that. So there may be a mindset coming along, instead of using things like that, that we go back to what we used to, by paper, that disintegrated, that disposed of itself, and those kind of things. So plastics cheaper, though.
When did we go to Lexington to, on the tour? Was it last winter?
We went to Lexington last winter. I think it was last October, maybe.
About a year ago.
Mid-October, yeah.
In 16, I guess?
No, 17.
Was it 17?
Yeah, you, me, and Melanie and Chuck, yeah.
And did Connie, did you know?
No, it was just the four of us.
Well, that was kind of eye-opening, because that's what the mayor is saying, is pretty much on line with what they were telling us at the time about China, and the fact that the demand is just limited.
It's been coming. It's been coming, but it's just now, it's starting to get mainstream impressions.
The analysis that I read, China was willing, as a matter of public policy, to pay low wages to folks that decontaminated recyclable materials.
Well, they do that with recycled clothes and everything.
I saw a show on that.
But they're not taking it anymore.
And you got to, how in the world can you take those materials, ship it across the world to another country, and somehow make that economically justifiable? I mean, it just doesn't-
It worked for a long time.
It did. But now there's so many people recycling too. That was the other thing they said, that it's become, recycling's become so popular, that it's kind of flooded the market with the commodity.
We prefer to not put things in the landfill. But today, the market is not providing a place for the goods to go. And we can't let them stack up. So I'm not saying we abandon the idea of recycling, but I think that going into the teeth of these realities, we have to be aware of the global situation.
Yeah, well, we are recycling.
We are.
And you're not saying that, but you're talking about taking another step forward and trying to make it a more comprehensive program.
Because we go door to door, we may end up spending a lot of money going door to door to recycle, and it ultimately ends up in the landfill here, because we have no place to take it, or-
Jared Holland reported to me that he went to a meeting at the Bluegrass Air Development District last week, and it was a solid waste related committee. Jared's our solid waste coordinator. And I think there are a number of cities across central Kentucky that are currently recycling, who are joining together into a task force to try and figure out how they save themselves. And I think Lexington will be a part of that task force. We're taking our stuff to Lexington. So I believe we're as current as we can be, but we haven't made a large investment prior to the market collapsing. So I'm just, this is just for current information. There's lots of articles like this available, and I just want us to make prudent decisions.
I'm glad you did, because whenever the campaign season ramps up, that's one of the conversations that absolutely comes up.
That is the number one conversation, I will tell you, that I get stopped about, I get written about, and people do not understand it.
Yeah. So really, we're in a good spot there. We are. We're doing what we need to do. We're trying to help the environment. If somebody wants to recycle, they absolutely can. But I'm glad we haven't spent a couple few million dollars in capital improvements to try to get to a higher level, considering what's happening right now. And you just never know about these things.
Polly's point is correct. The public has a different perception.
They do.
And it's difficult, because the popular narrative is that if you do it well, recycling can save you money. And even the recent Kentuckians for the Commonwealth questionnaire that you all were asked, the question was even phrased, that a recycling program can save money. We just need to help people understand what the real market is, and then we can make better decisions.
Well, I think too, a big thing with us being a growing community, is so many people that are moving here from other places.
Yes.
And they all have recycling. And that's the number one thing they ask, is they're moving here from places that do it. And, you know.
They want to know where it is.
It's going to be interesting to see over the next year, how many of those places they moved from that have it, still have it.
Yeah, I'm wondering about that too, with the global-
I think they'll keep it up.
We want to recycle, and if we can find markets, we're willing to recycle. Also wanted to just, this is not a decision for tonight, but it's something that's been on my mind a lot, since the council has spent a lot of time discussing the cemetery wall, and what is the best approach to this investment. And it is an investment for the community, and it's going to be a very large investment. Given some financial matters that I've discussed recently with the Finance Committee, that we're working our way through, given the realities of the next issue I want to discuss with you, which is our need to build a very expensive improvement, East Main Street Extended, that we had not budgeted for. I'm going to ask our engineers to look at, I still want us to plan for a large, permanent fix for the cemetery wall. I want us to choose the look we want, and I want us to work toward that project. But I'm reluctant today to commit $900,000 to a million dollars to build that cemetery wall, in the face of some other demands that we have. I don't, I'm not suggesting we abandon that project, but I'm very concerned about going forward with it immediately. I would like to discuss, have you all think about, and then us have some conversations outside of council, and again at the next council meeting, about us considering repairing the wall for a short-term, Band-Aid solution, with the ultimate goal to fix it correctly, when we're not faced with roads that we didn't budget for, that cost a million for.
I was talking to Karen earlier tonight, maybe, I don't know where they are, maybe there's some historical grants that we could file for.
We've looked around all the normal places, Mormon, and they're just, right now, you can't find great money to do important programs, much less make a wall pretty.
Grant sources have so dried up, it's really sad.
We can fix this wall, but we're going to have to pay to fix this wall. And I'm suggesting that we slow down and do a, consider a temporary repair, until we get a couple of things built that we have to do. It's not a full recommendation, I'm not asking you for a vote tonight, but I would like for you to think about it.
Mayor, I'll say, since our last meeting, you know, I mean, you know, it's something that it means a great deal to the community, there's no doubt. And like you said, when we first started talking about it, it was what, a $200,000, $300,000 maybe project, is what we were, I guess we were all kind of hoping for. And then by the time the consultants got finished with the plan, that we asked for, we asked for multiple plans, it turned into a $900,000 wall, which is essentially a million dollar wall. At least from my perspective, and I'm not trying to speak for everyone, I don't mind taking a step back and evaluating this, and just trying to think of what can we do, what should we do. There's no need to rush into it. I mean, granted, if we need to do some repairs, I think that's probably appropriate. But I think we need to give it some thought. Also, I like, I want to see what Stacy's got to say about our financial situation, and you, obviously Connie now on the Finance Committee, and it's something we're pretty involved with. But I think that's pretty positive as well. And maybe, maybe looking at this, you know, in another quarter, and two quarters, or whatever the case may be, things might free up a little bit, and make it a little bit more palatable. Maybe we'll come up with another idea, another concept that looks great, and that is a long-term improvement as well.
I agree with you, David, because I think it is such a big step, and so much money. And sometimes, if you give it a little time, something else comes forward, that can be a good, a good fix.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we could start on that wall till springtime anyway. It's getting late in the year.
Maybe we could eliminate the wrought iron at the top, and go back with the stone, which has worked for all these years, and been, you know, kind of the-
Patchet or something.
The way it was, and ties in with the rock house, the stone house.
Yeah, and the thing that I want to reassure the council and the public, that we know it's important, and the wall needs to be beautiful, and it needs to last another hundred years. I just, I'm not sure that today is the time to buy that wall. And I wanted you all to think about at least a short-term repair.
So the people can be safe on the same wall?
The next, because the next thing I want to talk with you about is not actually an agenda item, but we've got better information about East Main Street Extended, and what has to be done immediately to East Main Street Extended. And that's a big part of my thinking about the cemetery wall funding. This last Friday, we pulled together the superintendent, his Director of Facilities, his transportation folks, integrated engineering that has done our work on East Main Street Extended, city engineer, and various policymakers, so we could get everybody in this room at the same time, and put these plans up. We discussed three different school-related projects, but the one that has our attention with the most urgency is rebuilding East Main Street Extended. That's what's up on the monitor. It's a little hard to see. I'll pass this around. And is that one open there right there? That's the other. You can pass that around. It shows a three-lane configuration, going all the way from the bypass to the end of the school property. The difficulty for this site is that there are, on a daily basis, between 400 to 500 rock and concrete truck trips on East Main Street Extended. And twice a day, that truck traffic is going to be like school buses. So this three-lane configuration, as you see before you, has been pretty well engineered, and it has an estimated price tag of $1.2 million. It is probably the minimum that we can build, if we're going to have safe transportation of children. I wouldn't be at all surprised, since utility relocation is only listed on there at $75,000, that that may be a light estimate. This easily could be a $1.4 million road project. The council's original commitment on this, to this school, was to build a $60,000 entrance. This is our reality today. This school is under construction, and this school will be open a year from today. So we have no time to wait on this project. We have to start design. We have to begin considering funding. We will be talking to federal and state sources of funding. But absent any certainty of assistance, we've got a $1.2, possibly $1.4 million road that we have to build that we haven't budgeted for.
Isn't there any other proposal, other, this one, this one's going to be the proposal? Is that what it is?
Actually, Karen, there's a, if we had a bigger map, I would show you, can't quite see it on this one. Karen, you can see it on the one that we're passing around. I don't know if it'll show up on this one or not. The real white lines that show where the school buildings will be, can you all see those? The Creekside Elementary will, yeah, it shows up much better here than it does on paper. The middle school, they're going to delay for several years. You know, they're going to now expand Georgetown Middle School with a two-story addition, and push off the construction of this middle school three or four years down the road, maybe, maybe longer. The engineers in the room, and we also had Richard Hamilton in the room, who's fairly interested in this little part of the road. The professionals believe that this is the minimum that we have to build before this school opens. They think long-term, to handle both of these schools, we're going to need a rear exit onto the bypass. There is a curb cut, just a little bit out of this picture, that is on the Dennis Anderson property. So there's already an encroachment built in there. Now Dennis may have other plans for that encroachment opportunity. But somewhere between, this has to be now, that has to be sometime in the intervening period.
It's on this side of the creek.
It's on this side of the creek. We think by looking at it, Karen, that they can't use the bypass as the sole entrance and exit, because you can't, you'll never be able to turn across traffic. But that would be more of a right-in, right-out, and it really does become necessary for traffic flow to be a rear exit onto the bypass.
That's going to be, even though that's an improvement, of course, from what the road is now, that's still going to be quite, quite the mess. That's not enough road to handle the proposal. That's not enough road to handle the community and the proposal.
Well, that's what I-
I don't know what else, I'm not saying.
That's what I pushed the engineers about. And they've said, this is, this is what you can do.
That's all you can pin on, is a traffic engineer, a traffic study to tell you. Because there is, I mean, I know there's a lot of homes back there, but I guess it does come to a dead end. It can only go so far.
You know, they go up to the other road.
Yeah, they'll have to go out. But I mean, think about, as you're, as we're contemplating this, and there may be nothing else that we can do, but think about Ann Mason and Royal Springs, what a freaking mess that is. And that's out onto a main road, and the community that's across the street, they can't get out in the morning. When school started, I got three or four texts that they can't get out in the morning, out of that, that area. So this will eventually be that kind of problem, too.
Well, no, they, we discussed that.
Okay.
And because Western Elementary doesn't have that problem, they contain it. They can contain it in there. That's what they're supposed to do.
What they're trying to do, Karen, is engineer enough stack room in their site to where they say we won't- What they're trying to do, Karen, is, is engineer enough stack room in their site to where they say we won't back up on East Main.
Right.
If you go by Lemons Mill, you might question that.
Right.
But I, all we can do is rely on the engineers and the best intentions.
And...
This school is happening. A year from now, that school will have children going in it.
And economically, it's a good thing for the community for that school to happen. So economically, it's a good thing for it to happen. But is there not, if the back road happens and there's some responsibility for the school to do that back road?
Well, in, also keep in mind, the other thing that was brought up, that probably in the spring, there will be a light at Lemons Mill because of the townhouses that are supposed to be constructed, constructed and finished. They're gonna do another traffic study.
'Cause the Lemons Mill Road hasn't been improved.
We, we looked, the, the meeting that I was talking about, this was the third and most important issue. Uh, but we, we looked at Lemons Mill and the traffic problems there and what we're doing and how the traffic light is coming along. And, uh, where we are right now on that Lemons Mill traffic light is we have to meet warrants.
Yep.
Each hour for eight consecutive hours. And right now, we meet, I'm sorry, Hallie. Yes, sir. Uh, we meet warrants in the morning and we meet warrants in the afternoon with schools in and out, but we don't meet warrants in the inner, in-between hours. We're pretty confident that by, in six months, they will meet the warrants for those other hours and that we can achieve the, the stoplight at Lemons Mill through regular District Seven procedures.
And funding. Is that what you're saying, Mayor?
Yes, it's funded.
Yes.
Through the state.
Through the state. Unless they come back with some crazy thing about we have to rebuild another intersection like they did to us earlier this year.
I see what's gonna happen. We're gonna build this. It's not gonna contain, the, what the residents are gonna do is in school hours.
They're gonna let the school out.
Back out over onto off of East Main Street and they're gonna back over into Lemons Mill and then we're gonna have the same problem in Lemons Mill that we have in East Main Street Extended today. So then we'll be doing that road, uh, 'cause we've talked about that road for years and years and years. We'll be doing that road next year, for a year, two years from now.
So what's the answer?
I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, right now, we don't have a choice.
I'm just predicting the future.
This has to be done.
It does. And I mean, all we can do is go in with the engineers. You know, they'll do the traffic studies and they'll show the flow of traffic on every road, what they're anticipating at different times. I mean, it is, it might not be perfect, but it's, it's pretty detailed and it's, it's all we can go off of.
It's not enough, so do, uh, in the beginning, do we do something to increase, increase it now and go ahead and bite the bullet now? To save some years before we have to go do the next street or?
I don't know what, what it is.
I know you're gonna take what the experts say, but experts have been wrong more than they're right around here, so.
Well, we can ignore them and just do something different than what they say. I'm not sure what the color of it is.
While we have.
Yes, sir.
In any development, there's, they're done in phases, so.
Maybe something you don't know. But this property here was purchased when I was on the board in Dallas Township Superintendent. And if I'm not mistaken, it was about seventeen acres and we bought it from John Hill Drake. Now, right in here, there was an egress to that property. And we bought that with the intent that we thought we were gonna buy that at the time. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it might've been Lucas' property. We were not able to secure that property. So we were stuck with a piece of land that we really had no egress, egress, in and out. If I'm not mistaken, back there at the end of that dirt, that is the end of that hill. And beyond that is a steep hill and then you're into flood plain. I don't know how a road can go in flood plain, to be very honest about it. But I will tell you that Dennis Anderson, we wound up, while I was on the board, we exchanged property. We traded property. We actually got more out of it, which is now where, uh, Lemons Mill sits. And we wound up negotiating for additional land. We wound up putting a tennis court and I think there's softball and a baseball field because we were athletic facility poor in the school district. But what I'm concerned about, and I promised my wife I wouldn't say anything. Uh, what I'm concerned about is that piece of property right there, very easily before it's over with, will probably be zoned or they'll come diszoned commercial. Then you're gonna have a bunch of people trying to dump right here, plus all the subdivisions you got over here between Lemons Mill and East Main Street. And so this area right here, see what you're all saying. Let me have a look. 'Cause I don't think Mr. Anderson exchanged property just to sit on it growing back.
So, uh...
But again, you can only deal with what you know at this point. I mean, with what the engineers, the information that they've given us.
We're, we're doing the best we can to make a positive situation out, out of this.
This is gonna make a better situation than what's, what's currently or what could be. But I think it's, in a few years, we're going to create pressure, I say in a couple of years, we're creating pressure somewhere else and we'll have to fix that. And then I think in a couple more years, I should come back and do something again with this. But like you said, it's what the engineers are, it's what the engineers are telling us to do, so it's what we have to do. But I'm just forecasting what I see happening based on, uh, just experience of other areas in the community.
Karen, I'd agree a hundred percent. I, I don't think it's hard to predict that two schools off East Main Street Extended are gonna be difficult.
Right.
This is our effort to address our responsibility.
Can I ask you a question? Why is this all on the council's back? Because it's in the city?
And the school, the school legally cannot expend funds off of school property. That's why they asked the county to build the entrance on Betsy Way. And they asked us to build the entrance on East Main Street Extended. That's common practice for school construction, that the local community will provide an entrance.
We're providing a good entrance on this one.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't do this, we're gonna have a bigger problem than we could imagine.
But if you don't do this, the school buses are not going down there, right?
Yeah. So what do we do, Mayor? How do we move forward? We gotta move forward.
We, we, we wanted, uh, we're gonna seek, uh, a design engineer right away and then bring that contract back to you all for approval. That'll be our first step. And then I'm making phone calls to see where any emergency funding might be. And, uh, then we'll continue to work together with the finance committee and the council. We, we have no choice but to build this, so we will get it built. And it's, it's really not that long of a road. It's just a very expensive stretch of road. So we can get it built in time, we just need to be about doing it. The, the others that we, uh, looked at, uh...
Cardinal Drive.
Yeah, Cardinal Drive. Good. Uh, we, we talked about Cardinal Drive a lot. Just to orient you all, uh, gosh, let's see. The dog leg that goes up to the top part of the picture is US 25. That's the entrance to US 25. Uh, the little road coming down is, uh, Cumberland. I know where Cumberland is. No, it's the entrance to the school.
The entrance to the school, Cumberland.
That's right. Cumberland is on up. We're...
You wanna share?
The biggest part of the project that we're interested in remarkably enough, uh, some of this will be three-laned, and I'll pass this map around to where you all can see where it'll be three-laned. But do you see that little squirrel thin line down at the bottom? Yeah. That's one of the major improvements that will be built with this grant. And we had to get special permission for those grant funds to be able to be spent on school property.
Yeah.
Show us.
Traffic flow.
This. And we, our engineers sent this traffic plan to the, to the school. And we, they recommended completely flipping the school traffic and the way they stack it. And the school agreed with the engineers. So it, it can take effect this year, but for the next school year, I think, I forget exactly how it works, but it all stacks on school property.
It does.
They've modeled this, uh, we looked at the modeling at various traffic levels until it would lock up. And we actually found a couple of problems with the model that we wrote in real time when we were all together. The engineers and the police department believe that with these changes and the second high school next year, that we can substantially improve this traffic for next year. Now, what we haven't gotten yet is, uh, we also wanted at the other end of Cardinal Drive where it turns into Long Lake. We wanted the, the traffic light, we think it's real important for us to have the traffic light at the intersection of Long Lake and Cardinal Drive. That's where we're spending so much money on police overtime. There we go.
There you went.
There we go.
There you're back. There you go.
There we go. So...
Can't you see it?
A little bit is picking.
Is that what we're...
Can't you all see that?
What is it, a dot? That's a short streak.
Do you need to double-click it?
It controls Z.
Control Z?
Yeah, several times.
Control Z.
See, paper is so much more dependable.
No technology. Here's your paper, Karen. Thank you. There's my paper.
There we go. Cardinal Drive and Long Lake. We think this left turn lane and left turn light and the stack room are essential. Particularly so we don't back traffic up, uh, all the way onto the bypass, which can't happen in the morning. So we think this intersection is essential on District Seven, as it says, we're not close to needing warrants for it. They even said if we bothered ourselves and put it in and paid and operated ourselves, we couldn't have it. So, uh, we intend to continue to pursue this conversation with other people other than District Seven, 'cause we think that is really important to have. We're getting new estimates back from the cabinet and, uh, there ought to be some real construction starting up there pretty soon. But I think we did a pretty thorough conversation on what our three most current school issues, school traffic issues are. Uh, and we will work, we will be back in touch with you about East Main Street Extended. Okay, I just blew the over-under on how long the meeting was gonna take.
You probably, sorry. That's all. We're not gonna go there.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's all the mayor comments. I think I was gonna stop there. I think I'm gonna leave this one alone for now.
Don't be scared.
Bring it on, bring it on.
Don't be scared.
Don't be scared? Well, it's just information that, uh, this, this is public information that, uh, it's currently estimated according to a meeting that Robert Bruin attended Friday that our, our landfill has two point three nine years of capacity left.
Wow.
Two point three nine and...
It's all good.
It's all good.
Can we go back to burning in our yard again?
There you go, yes.
That news and the recycling market news go in opposite directions of the way we want them to go. So, uh...
Are they still in court over this landfill?
Yes.
They lost it, they lost it in trial.
They, they lost their trial, their, their case against supportive adjustments. They're not appealed that yet, that we know of. It's just information at this point, and, uh, we're not sure what that means, but we just got it and wanted you to have it.
Thank you. Just bring it on.
Bring it on. Okay. After that little bit of good news. I said I didn't have many, but they were all big.
They were good ones.
Uh, okay. We're down to number seven and Chase.
Chase, are you ready?
All right, here we go.
Agreed, motion.
Georgetown Municipal has five purchase orders and one finance matter for the council's consideration. I can go through all those or I can just, um, take any questions that council has, um, whatever you prefer.
If, if you could just, for my benefit, if you could just line item by line item, tell us what you're buying with each line item.
Items A and E, if you will, those are new vehicle purchases purchased through the state price contract. They're replacing two two thousand five Ford Escapes. One is a office vehicle, pool vehicle, and one is a water treatment plant vehicle. Karen, you're excavating. That's a purchase order and that's one you actually already approved, a larger purchase order last meeting. And accounting folks actually wanted to pay each pay request with a separate purchase order, so this is actually just a repeat in a smaller amount. Meat equipment, that is a new mini excavator that our, um, distribution crew will use. It's a smaller piece of equipment, easier to get into backyards and defense areas. Our purchase order for Conhurst, that is for our, um, bluegrass RV sewer replacement. That's where we're partnering with the developer to eliminate a pump station and provide the new development with sanitary sewer service.
All of those are purchase orders. Uh, I think we take, thank A through E, thank you.
For the A through E. Second, Marvin?
Yes.
I sit second.
Melly sit second.
Melson, yeah.
We, we got Seth there. Okay, Chase, you've learned this routine pretty quickly. You're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and then the last one.
Last item is just a renewal of a line of credit that we have and that we have used. And it's at a one point seven five percent interest rate on the renewal, so, um, we're hoping that you will approve.
Mayor, do you think he could get some credit for us to help pay some of this stuff if we squeeze him a little?
Well, if we ask him not to.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. And second. There's no questions for Chase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask, were they not able to be a part of our, um, enterprise lease?
They, they could be and we, we, we hope they'll take a look at that.
Okay.
They haven't taken that step yet?
Actually, Enterprise contacted us, but they were more interested in selling. They, they presented a sell option. And when we costed out the service contract that goes with the auto sales, uh, the state price contract was cheaper, but we can look into leasing if, uh, if advised.
We've done pretty, we've done a pretty extensive fleet management contract with them on a lease basis that's really reduced our capital expenditures.
Since the city owns water, I mean, you would think that they would volunteer to come in there and help them out.
Well, they, they should and they ought to be just, uh, a part of our contract.
Right.
And you all have, you all have a lot of light-duty trucks, so.
And, and we use, I think we use the state price contract just for its...
We believe we're, we believe we're saving money on the state.
We can certainly look into that. Any way we can save money, we will, we will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I want the council to note too that, uh, as was the case when we worked with GMWSS when Bob White was there, uh, we, we learned to work real closely with Bob and we had, uh, we had developed a high level of confidence there and, uh, Chase is doing a great job. We've been in a couple of meetings that, uh, very high-level content and, uh, he's been really valuable to me being in the room, so.
Good.
It's a good, it's a good working relationship.
Good.
Under city attorney, the thing we all... Under City Attorney, the thing we all love to deal with every year is the first reading of the property tax ordinance. Just to walk you through a little bit of our recommendation tonight. Because of the increased assessment values in Georgetown, and we've read about the higher assessments. Clearly, our total assessed values are higher. So that when the state, when we did our calculations with the formula the state gives us, the compensating rate. We're currently at 6.5 cents per hundred dollars of evaluation. County had the same property tax rate as we did, 6.5 cents per hundred. Two, three weeks ago, the county adopted their tax rate and they lowered theirs to 6.3 percent. Excuse me, 6.3 cents per hundred dollars of evaluation. That was their compensating rate, the amount that let them collect the same number of dollars as they did in the previous year. They went to 6.3. We are recommending tonight that we match the county's move to take our rate to 6.3%. Although, our compensating rate, our true compensating rate would be 6.2 cents per hundred dollars of evaluation. We are recommending that we match the county's valuation at 6.3%. This rate would be obviously a reduction in the rate. It would not be subject to recall. However, it would require that we hold a public hearing as a part of our next council meeting prior to adopting that rate. Had a chance to discuss this with the Finance Committee, although not as extensively as I would like to. But these numbers should not surprise the Finance Committee. And that is our recommendation. And be glad, we're ready for first reading of that ordinance tonight. But want to obviously take any conversation that the council. I assume, I haven't done the homework to confirm it, but I would assume at 6.3 we would still have the lowest or one of the lowest property tax rates in the state.
Well, we do at 6, at 6.5. And the thing about it is, is that we do have an opportunity to reduce it, which is a good thing. Although I know our property valuations are going up. So in essence, the tax rate, they're probably gonna be, we're gonna be paying the same taxes. But still, we're gonna be able to get a reduction. If we didn't reduce it, we wouldn't, if we stayed the same, then they would go up. So, we're doing the, the community a service by taking it down. But still, being able to have that revenue come in that we're gonna need to build a road, for schools, I'm just saying.
And I can even, if you all want to jot these numbers down, I'd be glad to give you just some hard numbers that you can, you can consider. Based on the revenue that we, we take in. Let's see. At the .063, we would take in a million 834,589. And that's a little bit real property and a little bit personal combined together. If we went all the way down to the 6.2, that number would be 1,805,469.
You know, you gave it at the .65 by any chance?
We didn't calculate that, we did calculate 6.4. If you'd like to jot down David, if we went to 6.4, which we can do without being subject to recall. That would realize revenue of 1,863,710.
You're looking at about a $30,000 difference between each one of them.
If you own a $100,000 home, the difference between the 6.3 rate and the 6.2 rate is $1.
A year.
A year. Yeah, $1 a year. So. That's our recommendation. I'd be glad to hand around these calculations, they're really complicated.
Good first reading.
Yeah. So, yeah, why don't we do first reading?
In order to providing for and making the real property, personal property, motor vehicle and watercraft tax levy for city purposes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 inclusive. Whereas the City Council of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky is required by KRS 92.280 to enact by ordinance each year a tax levy on all real property, personal property, motor vehicles and watercraft. Now therefore, be advised by the City Council for the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the following tax levy is hereby made for city purposes for the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 inclusive to it. For the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 inclusive, there is hereby made a tax levy of 6.3 cents, 0.0630, on each $100 of assessed real property. 6.3 cents on each $100 of assessed personal property. And 16.8 cents on each $100 of assessed motor vehicle and watercraft. Which tax proceeds shall be designated to the general fund for the general operation of city government. Section 2, all matters relating to the payment of the taxes imposed on motor vehicles and watercraft hereunder shall be in accordance with KRS Chapter 134.800. Section 3, that upon all taxes for real property and personal property levied herein with which are unpaid January the 1st, 2019, there shall begin to accrue, attach and be added from said date a flat penalty of 15% onto the total amount of said taxes. Then due and payable through January 31st, 2019. After which, the flat penalty shall be 20%. Additionally, tax bills not paid before March 1st, 2019 shall have added to them interest at the rate of 1% per month or fraction of a month until said taxes are paid. The penalty and interest as provided herein shall be added to said unpaid taxes and collected by the City Finance Director and/or the City Clerk. Should the real or personal property tax herein become delinquent, the City Financial Officer, the City Clerk and/or the City Attorney are authorized to file suit to collect all delinquent taxes plus court costs and expenses, including a reasonable attorney fee incurred by reason of the delinquency. Section 4, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 5, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 6, the ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. Publicly introduced and revered the first time August 27th, 2018.
Thank you, that will constitute first reading. We will have the advertisements in the paper so that we can have the public hearing as part of our next council meeting prior to voting on the ordinance. Okay, again, Eddie could not be with us tonight due to a death of his family. And we encouraged him not to be here tonight. But under Eddie's portion of the agenda, we have a municipal order approving a contract.
You skipped B, sorry.
Did I skip B? Well, let me go back up and pick it up. Item B under City Attorney, a municipal order approving contracts with the Bluegrass Area Development District for grant and loan administration. This particular contract with the Ad District will be for our KIA loan. Later, we'll, we'll probably contract with the Ad if we do the CDBG grant.
No, we're contracting with them for administration of the 1 million, the budget bill, 1,750,000 and for the loan administration.
Okay.
And then the CDBG stuff will be.
The CDBG will be a completely separate.
That will come to the next council meeting.
Okay, if I haven't totally confused you. Are you in motion? Yes, sir. Hayden seconded, that was on it. There are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Eddie was, before he left today, he let me know that he was, he was unhappy with the estimates we had gotten on repairs to Clay Avenue and Hamilton Street. I just came to take a real look at Clay Avenue, it's been just a disaster.
Well, it's so funny because I had a constituent contact me and I went Friday and I took pictures. And then when I got this late Friday afternoon, I was like, that's it. It's awful. It is so bad.
In fact, I think in years past, the city hadn't resurfaced it because the drainage problems were so bad, we didn't want to deal with it.
Yeah, yeah.
But Eddie's got some solutions with curbing and paving.
That's good.
I talked to Eddie, they were supposed to start that Monday morning and then I had a couple residents hand me side by side. And said, they're gonna mill it out and they're gonna put it right back the way it is. And I said, well, that's what their intentions, I think. So Eddie got, I got ahold of Eddie, he went up and looked at it with Richard and he decided that they need to do something different. So they're very tickled.
It, it needs a bigger fix.
We need that fire hydrant on that little street.
There's that too, so.
And I remember correctly, when we did this once before, that we tried to help the problem. The lady that lives on that street that's blind.
Yeah.
The curves were made too high or something.
She don't have, she don't have a curve on hers.
That's why, that's part of the reason why, actually, is because, but there's something to take in consideration to make sure it's, it's.
Handicaps successful, yeah.
Yeah, because she does live there and she walks.
Debbie.
Yeah.
She walks all over the place.
She walks all over the place.
Her dog's right with her, sip, her dog sippered the other day and now she messed her foot up.
Oh.
So that, the reason we've taken that off, we're just trying to make it a little better and we'll bring it back to you.
I'm glad you're doing that, they'll be excited up there.
So we're not gonna do 9B tonight, Mayor?
We're not gonna do it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
We'll bring you back a better price on that. Item 10 on your agenda that we've all been waiting for.
Well, we skipped municipal.
Mayor, you're.
I'm gonna give you a motion for 9A.
She's got up and down, up and down. Exercise.
Thank you. Motion's been made to, thank you and seconded.
Second, second it, Mark.
Yes, I'm sure of it. There are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now.
Now, are we down to number 10?
I believe we are.
Yes.
Stacy, thank you.
She's excited, she shot up three times.
Good evening.
Hello.
I just wanted to present you with the quarterly financial report. Sorry, it's a couple of meetings late. We had a software thing, trying to get some ports out of it and then I just forgot last meeting. I wanted to bring this to you. This is through June 30th and I always present our last quarter with the caveat of there will be adjustments during the audit. Probably not significant ones, except for one particular category that I'll talk to you about. But we'll get another picture of it again here in a few months. So the first major category is the payroll tax collections, our employee withholdings. And as you can see, through July, which would be collections for the month of June, we have collected 12.8 million dollars in payroll taxes. And our estimated budget was 11 million. So, the good news on that one, we are trending up through last year. And it's a good thing. And I do want to apologize at the bottom of this, on the incentive payments. If you want to write these down, I forgot to plug them in, but the incentive payment for April was 209,234. And the incentive payment for May was 391,540. Bringing it to a total of 2,272,682. So, I wanted to give you that. Now, I have not received the number for the June incentive just yet. Sometimes they get a couple months behind on it, so I don't have that number just yet. So I anticipate, once, once we plug in June, that we will have hit our anticipated 2.5 million in incentive payments for the year. Just so you can always see the full picture of what would our total revenue be if we added that back to the 12.8. Net profit taxes, we've been talking about this a little bit every quarter, that we had anticipated this not coming in as planned. And it has not. It has come in right about where I thought it would be. Currently, our collections for the year are at 2.4 million and change. We budgeted 3.5 million and we had been talking a little bit that we might come up a couple million short on this category. And this is one of those where the audit entry comes in. When the Revenue Commission has their audit, they will forward me a copy. And it always records a number of net profit credits due as of June 30th. So if someone filed a return and it had a credit balance and they're applying that credit to the next year. So what will happen is, we know of at least one large credit, it's outstanding, from a tax return that's already been filed. It'll be about a million dollars. This is gonna go from 2.4 to 1 million dollars. What happens is, that 1 million dollar credit rolls to this current fiscal year. And hopefully, the tax return that is filed for that will heat that credit up and we'll be able to claim that as revenue this fiscal year. We, we anticipated that and thankfully, the payroll taxes have trended up, which helped.
It kind of bounces out.
For this year, we got, we got.
Not a wash.
It worked out good.
For this year, we've about got a wash, but boy, net profits is just really tough to predict. Particularly with that, that credit that we, we know is working out.
You know you're gonna hit it and you just don't know.
And you can see, looking at the previous years, we've always recorded a credit in June because you can see June is always, always shows a negative number. We don't show a negative number yet for this June because I don't have that number for revenue. But I do anticipate it being at least $1 million. Insurance premium tax collections are also beating the budget. 2,876,000 on a budget of 2,450,000. So a little over 400,000 above our budget there. This looks probably pretty easily explained. Assessments go up, premiums go up, new properties being developed, new houses being built. Just the result of our growing economy and growing development here in the city. Property tax collections, we budgeted 1,690,000 and we came in at 1,686,000.
We're pretty close.
Right on target. Shows us 100%.
She'll do better on that.
A tiny bit short of that, but that looks good. And our alcoholic beverage regulatory fees, which we use to fund partially the City Clerk's office as our ABC administrator and also for police work. We brought in 1,629.
We have 200,000 again next year.
Those are our major revenue categories. Any questions?
Pretty good estimates.
You've also got your detailed report that you can take the time to look through and always let me know if you have questions after you look through it.
Thanks, Stacy, you do a good job.
Good job, good job.
Stacy's still tracking it real closely and, and we, we share information. We think that we, we, in the coming months, we have a, might have a bit of a flattening of payroll taxes. Some of that growth might taper off just a little bit. So I just want to be cautionary that the payroll tax may not continue to climb quite at such a rate. It may flatten just a little bit.
Mayor, with what she says, additional income, you've got 500,000 additional income. If you take the 200,000 that we had budgeted for the wall that we're not gonna do. If you take 350,000 that you had, I think it's what you had budgeted for the architectural fees. And you've got a million dollars, so you don't have much more and you've got your road done.
We gonna leave the wall the way it is?
Well, we're gonna repair it, so it's not gonna take 200,000 to repair it. It better not.
If it did, if it did.
I got that message pretty clear.
Heard that, Mayor?
You all are telling who's doing the million and we're gonna be short on that.
Karen gets you some mortar and mortar.
What about we're gonna be short on the 2 million?
What about the 2 million short on?
We're not gonna do that, we're fine.
I like your math there, Mayor, Karen.
Okay. Any other questions for Stacy?
New math.
New math.
Thanks, Stacy.
Karen, way to figure it out.
Way to work that pencil, girl.
Under Human Resources, we have first reading of a personnel ordinance. And I want to walk you through what those changes are and thank Polly for being the sponsor. We, we've done a couple of things with the Human Resources ordinance. The first is, has to do with our victim. Uh, the first is, uh, has to do with our victim of crime advocacy. Uh, we are, uh, we, we've had a, a great outcome with Megan Shook being our, our victim of crime advocacy person and setting up her Angel Network. Uh, Megan is doing a great job, but she needs, uh, she's a, a young mother and wants to be home a little more. So we've worked out an arrangement with Ms. Shook for her to go to part-time to, to keep the continuity going with the program and the contacts she's made with the various victims centers and, and citizens. Uh, and we, we'd like to fund Megan's part-time position by using the 25,000 dollars that we allocated, uh, for the part-time school safety program. Since we're now using, uh, a school resource officer, a full-time officer in that role, we have those funds available to us and we'd like to keep, uh, Ms. Shook on as a part-time employee. So the Personnel Ordinance reflects one and a half victims of crime advocacy. We want to hire a full-time person to work with Megan. So that is one change to the Personnel Ordinance. Uh, the other is, since Dusty Carter left code enforcement, uh, we are one code enforcement officer down, uh, but we have elected not to hire a, a supervisor, a code enforcement officer. This would be just another code enforcement position to replace the, uh, work that Dusty was doing as a code enforcement person. So actually, in this case, we're downgrading that job from a supervisor to a, to a, a regular inspector position. We can, I think we can safely do that because, uh, after Dusty retired and we looked carefully at code enforcement and how we ought to structure some things, it made sense that we have been working so closely, uh, between the Fire Department and the Police Department on doing code enforcement, uh, particularly with the natural relationship that exists between fire and code enforcement. Tim Mar, Tim Thompson, who is our Fire Marshal, uh, currently chairs our Code, uh, Appeals Board and works with, with these employees very carefully, uh, and has been engaged on a day-to-day basis. So after, uh, talking with the Chief of Police and talking with the Fire Chief and then, uh, was able to vet this with a couple of people, but I couldn't get to everybody, uh, I have signed an executive order transferring, uh, supervision of code enforcement to the Fire Department. And, uh, the two code enforcement employees, uh, currently Tammy and Jordan, to be joined by another code enforcement officer, will actually report to the Fire Marshal.
They never needed to be, they never needed to be in the Police Department to start with. It's because in most cities, code enforcement is under housing.
Yeah, it is.
Or the Building Inspection's office, or some, under the Fire Department because the Fire Department with, like what you're talking about with Tim's job, reports so closely to Building Inspection, so it should never have been in the Police Department, so as you can tell, I didn't vote in favor of doing that. But do you need to bring it back as the job description? I know you're in temporary transfer, but do you need to bring it back? Is it in their job description as to where they answer to? Or does it need to be brought back eventually to us?
We'll check on that. It's actually in the code enforcement ordinance that passed. They would report to the police unless changed it by executive order.
Which is bad.
But she's done, but we're actually, what we're doing is we're just really making that official.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if it was in their job description, you have to bring the job description back to us.
We'll check, but I don't believe it is.
Well, I think it's a better, I think it's a better move.
It's only ever been in that Personnel Ordinance where they report.
Okay, okay.
And the, the bigger picture here is that, in addition to having code enforcement report to Fire and, and get some more efficiencies there, right now, we have code enforcement, electrical inspection and building inspection all co-located down in the old Water Company Building on, on Clinton. Uh, we, we think for management purposes, it'll work much better if all three of those departments report to the same government. Right now, electrical inspection reports to the county, building and code enforcement report to the city. Uh, I've talked to the judge as recently as today about ultimately, I think our goal needs to be to align all three departments under one of the two governments. It can be county or it can be city. But to truly manage those three departments under one roof, we need one administrative control.
Okay, Mayor, have a question on that.
Mm-hmm.
There again, I think it's a wise idea. Um, but on, is it not normally, building inspection is the one that will ultimately, whichever weather falls, county, city, building inspection is ultimately the one that's in control of the other, other departments?
Clearly, electrical needs to report up to building.
I think that's what state says.
The other question is open, depending on how we want to structure it.
Okay. No, I think that's a good move. It should have been done years ago, but controversy with.
It's, it's time. And I, I mentioned to Judge Lesby today that, that if we, if we don't get it done now, then I'm gonna talk to the new judge about it because clearly, these three departments need to be administratively aligned under one control.
Agreed.
So we're.
And if it comes under the city, then on here, you've got the Director of Building, he needs to go up to a grade 11.
And, and depending on, uh, we don't know exactly what this looks like yet, but, but when, when, when you take a blank piece of paper and start looking at those three departments down there, I think it might warrant at some point, a director-level employee to run those three offices. I'm not sure you need a director for each one, but you need a director-level employee for everyone to report through.
No, I tried to do that when I was Mayor and it was a political nightmare. Of course, everything, it was a political nightmare, but it was a political nightmare at the time.
How long?
But it is absolutely, uh, the best thing that you could do to reorganize, streamline, make the departments work the way they're supposed to work in other cities. And that's exactly, it works on paper and after a while, it'll work in the department. And it'll be better for the city and the county and our constituents. So kudos.
I appreciate that very much. We're, we're working in that direction and the changes we're making to the Personnel Ordinance put us in a position to take these steps. Please.
The ordinance amends section 2-111 subsection C of the Code of Ordinances with summary. One, amends section 2-111C of the Code of Ordinances, which sets forth the classifications associated pay grades and authorized positions of each department to create the position of permanent part-time victims of advocate in the Police Department, abolish the position of Chief Code Enforcement Officer, and add one additional Code Enforcement Officer position, and to move all code enforcement positions from the Police Department to the Fire Department. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced in public, we're here for the first time, August 27th, 2018.
Thank you. First reading. Um, under Public Works, we have a municipal order approving a bid for a garbage truck. One, we have, this is another one on, on our, on our bandit. Yes, Mayor?
I'll sit.
Take your pick.
Take your pick.
Take your pick.
All right, we definitely have a motion, at least one second. And, uh, Robertson was playing in a football game tonight, or he would have been here to provide him a truck. Let the, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We need an executive session, uh, to discuss pending litigation, potential pending litigation. Uh, we'll go ahead and do that and come out and do council comments when we come out. Is that all right?
I move to enter into the executive session pursuant to KRS 618101C to discuss matters of opposed pending litigations against or on behalf of the city.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded that we resume regular session. In favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. While in executive session, we discussed ending litigation and of course took no action while we were in executive session. And we're at the point of the council meeting where we can have council comments. Mark, can we start with you? You're good.
I'm gonna ask again. I know Andrew's been really, really, really busy, but the signs on Payne's Crossing.
Yeah. Did I give you the last update that we got?
That you were waiting to hear from Omni?
Yeah. They said, "Forget about it. Come and take our signs and bring your green ones."
What? Say that again.
The homeowners association's response was, "We'll just take the standard signs."
I don't like it. I don't care. I might be the only one that says that, but I don't like this. I don't like our position right now.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying that our position has to be one thing or another. It's still our plan to come up with a, an agreement by which we agree with any homeowners association that has these decorative signs. Here's how you maintain them. Here's how we move forward. But they know that and they said, "We don't want to deal with that."
Well, I know. And I'm not, I'm not, look, I'm not, I'm not, no comment to you or the mayor by any means. I don't know. I just...
I don't think the homeowner is gonna be very happy.
We're gonna catch flak from it. But my question is, if that's the standard we're gonna draw, which is, "We're willing to accommodate you up to the point and to the cost of a regular sign and you're responsible for everything else," and they say, "Well, we don't want to deal with that hassle," then what do we do?
I don't know. I mean, we're the ones that are forcing them to be changed out. Maybe it should be our expense. I know nobody likes that. I don't like that, but...
Well, and we, when I spoke to them on the phone, I said, "I think that's what it, I think we ought to share that cost."
I wish that were the case.
I think we ought to recognize that it's not us that's doing it. I will say that. It's the M U T C D. It's a group of engineers that have said, "Here's the law."
But we're the enforcer.
We are. I said, "You know, we have some responsibility in that we took the signs down to begin with." Or it was that our pushing that they did so.
Hmm, I don't know. You know, when I go into a community, Hilton Head, and I know that's an extreme, okay, but in wherever you want to go, some of these pretty progressive communities in Florida and North Carolina, South Carolina, whatever the case may be, and they have decorative things, I like that.
I like it. It's distinctive.
It's my neighborhood and I'm a middle average neighborhood and it makes it look so much nicer to have.
It does. It really does.
So why do we want to step back? I mean, I know there's expense involved and I don't know that I want to step back. And Mayor, I've advocated for years landscaping on the interstate. Y'all have heard me say it.
Yes.
Day one.
I know.
And I just flew into Northern Kentucky Covington Airport and I looked at their landscape and I'm like, "What? We can do that. We can do that." And I know money's been tough. Karen, there wasn't the opportunity when you were in. Mayor, we've done a gazillion projects under your leadership and we're all appreciative of that. And we, you know, hopefully that'll continue. Maybe this can get on that list. I don't know. I just, I like this time deal.
David, there's gonna be costs to put up the green signs anyway. How much more is it gonna cost to put those back?
The labor's the labor, right?
It is. It's the buy-in, the signs that becomes the issue. And we said, that was the whole point, was we contacted them and said, "Look, we're interested in resolving this issue. Help us find replacements for these signs. We're not, we're not in the decorative sign business. Help us, where did you buy them? Where did you get this unique, oh, by the way, decorative pattern? Help us figure that out so we can retrofit these to have the correct size sign. We have legal liability issues if we don't get the correct size and reflective signs." That's all there is to that. Sign signs, for sure. Street signs, most likely. I said, "Help us find these so that we can, and then we can maybe come to an agreement on sharing the cost and..."
There's a company in Lexington, I think it's either 360 Sign or Sign 360.
360 signs, I think. We get literature from them.
They do. I mean, they don't...
I guess I'm at a loss of who enforces that because Karen's neighborhood's not like that. Cherry blossoms not like that.
Well, no, I think we're all on the list. It's a matter of when.
You're in the crosshairs.
Yeah. And the neighbors out in our subdivision, they're gonna notice them. They put around the curb and then off to the deep end, so they're not gonna be happy. So I'm like, "David, we need to come up with some kind of solution before we start taking out the signs."
I agree.
I agree. I agree too. I just, I'm telling you that...
It's like the government invasive thing.
That particular neighborhood does not feel the same way.
Actually, actually, if people want to buy fancier signs, they're free to do them in their development. When they develop it on the front end, I don't know. It's our job to bound forever if they decide to bound on the front end.
Mayor, they did.
I disagree with that.
They did what they were asked to do and they got it approved through our planning and zoning. Now, we're coming back and saying, "All right, now all of a sudden, this doesn't work anymore."
So if we decide to have an upgrade over what is required legally and they want to
Man, it's like, if like, if they put in, instead of concrete sidewalks, if they put in brick sidewalks, are we expected to maintain the brick sidewalks? We're not expecting...
We don't do that anyway.
Bricks sidewalks at all.
We don't do sidewalks at all.
I mean, that's...
No, we don't. We obviously don't do sidewalks.
That's why we're willing to say, look, alright, we'll contribute some cost up to what it would cost to put in a standard green sign and a pole, which is not an insignificant expense, but they should be responsible for everything above that. We'll put it in, but if they want to maintain non-standard decorative signs, they ought to pay for the difference. That's where it fell apart. And even in a temporary basis...
Listen, I hear you, and I know that's your opinion and that's the mayor's opinion. When it comes down to it, these eight people have to decide that. You know, and all, all due respect, all due respect, and if it's four to four, then the mayor gets to decide, I guess. And I don't mean that in a disrespectful way, I'm just, I'm just sympathetic to those homeowners, this is gonna be an issue.
Should we not put this on the next, next council meeting and actually have a council discussion about it? We've talked about it twice, but it's been at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
And should talk about how we proceed?
We go, come on.
Yeah.
And then proceed with it and see what we can...
And how much we're talking about? How much is that neighborhood, what's the true financial impact on that particular neighborhood?
I'll find out, I'll find out for you.
Please.
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 Where, where it gets hard is, and we can do this as a matter of policy, we can put, we can be responsible for maintenance of any kind of a decorative sign post forever, but it's a shame when the neighborhood themselves says, no, we don't want to do that, and we say, no, no, that's alright, we'll pay for it, we're glad to do it. But, as you say, we, that, I don't get to decide this issue.
Lexington's policy, which is very similar to many other cities' policies, is if you want to have non-standard signs, you sign an agreement with the city that says exactly what I've just described, which is, they remain responsible for maintaining the decorative aspects, and if the MUTCD changes and the sign size requirements change, or the reflectivity standards change, or the color standards change, they're responsible for fixing the signs to accommodate that. These are standards that we don't control, yet that we're bound to.
I get it, I get it, and 99.9% of the homeowners that moved in the neighborhood, they have no clue. You know, the developer did it, they, they put in the nice signs trying to attract people to their neighborhood, wherever that may be, and now, when we make them switch out, we're the bad guys. We're all the bad guys. And we've experienced that. I've got your calls.
I don't understand why it's a big deal with GPS now.
Having street signs?
Yeah, well, I mean, having the street signs that are, that are pretty and not reflective, you got your GPS in the car, it's gonna get you where you need to go, I'm just saying.
Who you asking?
I've been, I've been in the car.
She's on roll.
Alright. Put it on the next agenda.
Okay. Anything else?
Heck no.
Can you do...
It was an appointment.
My turn, man.
Your turn.
Well, I apologize if I sent it anybody tonight, Mayor, I appreciate all you're doing.
He's got a list.
I've got a good item, I've got a good item. I think we're all gonna be happy about this. I happen to serve on the grand jury today and you're hosting...
Actually, I was gonna mention something about that.
He did a fine job, would you tell him that? I was impressed, very much so. But out in front of the building, the justice building, there's a, a yellow stripe because the front door is no longer the front door.
Yes, it is, yeah.
We've already, we're already working on it.
You're already working on it? Making them over and looking spot.
Well, you might make me look good then.
David.
Millie had mentioned, Millie had mentioned these two spots about two months ago.
It was Millie. Millie gets all the credit.
Give me one little inch of credit.
That's it, Mayor.
Here you go, Millie.
Does anybody notice how pretty the white blocks are out here at the Parkin's place?
I'm gonna pass.
Parkin is such a huge...
Santa.
Yes, one quick little thing, I brought it to the traffic committee because a resident of McClellan, and I told him I would bring it up, and I told him I would go to the committee, said that they were real concerned, and Connie, listen to me, about the stoplight that only has a yellow flashing era off Payne's Depot turning left onto the bypass toward...
Uncle McClellan.
Marvin, this is my town, yeah. Left going toward Krokers.
Right.
And I brought it to you all and you said you all would look at it.
Natalia was there.
Yes.
And it's a state issue, and unless they do something about it, our hands are tied.
Well, but it has to be so much traffic studied.
Again, it comes back to that, again, so what, what it means is, is that when you get in the left lane to turn left on McClellan off of 62...
You can't.
When this light over here is green and, and oncoming traffic coming, this light to turn left is constantly yellow flashing, so you pretty much pull out in the...
Never goes to green.
And you turn when the traffic's clear, it's never a green light.
And that was their complaint, that they wanted a green light for a few seconds because of the traffic. So I did what I was told to do.
And that particular phasing of that light has been a very popular complaint.
First time you've heard this.
No, ma'am. In, in fact...
First time I'd heard it.
In fact, that, that one is, we hear about that one a lot.
Okay.
The phasing of lights.
I drop it every day, Millie, so I know.
Well, I think he does too, because he, anyway, that's all I have.
That's all you got? Anything else to come for the council? And if there is not, we will stand adjourned. Y'all were right.
Well, oh, real quick?
No, we're adjourned.
We're adjourned, we're gone. We're out of here.